Greetings and welcome to the Sacco City Council meeting for Monday, March 8th, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Let the record reflect that the council members, all council members are present, including the city administrator, with the vacancy of Ward 5. With that, we are at item 3. I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is located behind City Administrator Keanrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. With that, we are at item 4 on the agenda. 4A is a call for letters of interest for Ward 5 council vacancy. The city of Sacco is now accepting letters of interest from Ward 5 residents who wish to serve on the city council for the remainder of Councilman Mithorn's term, expiring December of 2021. Councilman Mithorn resigned on February 22nd, 2021, council meeting. The council has accepted his resignation at the March 1st, 2021 meeting. Interested candidates must submit letters of interest to Michelle Hughes, City Clerk, at mhughes@sacoMaine.org or the city clerk's office at Sacco City Hall, 300 Main Street, by 4:00 PM on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. The submissions from interested candidates will be reviewed and discussed publicly during the city council meeting on April 5th. To learn more about the responsibilities of a city councillor or to view the board map, please visit sacomaine.org/citycouncil. Thank you. We are at item, excuse me, item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee correspondents at this time? I see no committee correspondence. That brings us to item 6, Public Comments. City Administrator Keanrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I don't have anything submitted specifically for public comment. However, I will remind the council that you all received a number of emails regarding action item E, the Flag Pond Road parcels on tonight's agenda. So those were emailed to the entire council over the past week or so. So just as long as everyone has received those emails, those did come in, but they were not submitted specifically for public comment for me to read. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Keanrath. At this time, I'll open up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council on a specific topic, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Up first is Zoom Identifier Kevin Sutherland. Kevin, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council. Please remember the three-minute timer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kevin Sutherland, 15 North Street. I'm disappointed the council chose not to move to a public hearing the zoning revision item related to the Lincoln Bradley Street parcel to higher density use a few weeks ago. Tonight would have been the ideal time to help the neighborhood and the larger community better understand the need to further develop sites like this, as its proximity to downtown, where infrastructure already exists, would provide a stronger tax base, ultimately subsidizing taxes per acre elsewhere in our city. MDR, or as the zone prescribes, single-family homes are a downward trend throughout the country and even in our region. And I'm not the only consultant preaching this. The consultants that you're working with, that are also working with our Comprehensive Plan Committee, addressed this as part of their presentation back in January. I hope going forward, our zoning reflects the ideas and recommendations that are part of the approved comprehensive plan. This is the only way Sacco can be sustainable for the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Up next, we have Zoom Identifier Mark Gallos. Mark, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the council. A reminder, there is a three-minute time.
Okay. First of all, can you hear me? I'm not so good on the Zoom stuff.
We can hear you.
Okay, great, great. Guys, I'm calling up and I'm coming in a little unprepared, unfortunately. I'm out of town and I realized this thing was tonight. I've, my question is simply on the Portland Road Zone. We, I've been, I have about 100 acres of land around it that I was planning on developing. I spent probably the last two years with the developer and lawyers and everybody else and the engineers and so forth on this thing, spent tens of thousands of dollars on this thing. And I thought we were on a track to make this a mixed-use zone. Unfortunately, maybe a few months ago, apparently the zoning board or the planning council or the city council, somebody was having a late meeting and they decided to change this one back to the way it had been for the last 50 years. And we went right back to square one. My question is this, is at this point, I'm still not really sure what the Portland Road Zone consists of. Is it industrial? Is it business? Is it mixed-use? I know my neighbor Teresa DeFosse has some things going on over there. And we've been, obviously, in the area for, you know, the last 60 years. And I think we've been pretty good citizens. We're just trying to figure out what we've got and so we can have something to work with. But again, the last two and a half years have been extremely frustrating from the standpoint that we still don't know what we have. And so I asked tonight to maybe get some kind of clarification as to exactly what this Portland Road Zone means at this point. Can anybody help me on that?
Mark, the public comment section is for a time when it's for you to give your comments to the city council. It's not a Q and A. However, if you have specific questions around zoning, you should feel free to call the planning department tomorrow and they can answer all your questions regarding zoning.
Sure, sure. All right. Well, again, I'm not trying to be difficult by any stretch of the imagination. We're just trying to get some clarification and be pro-business and and pro-good citizens and bring some tax base to the city of Sacco. So we appreciate everything you guys are doing for us. I know you guys are all working hard and I appreciate it. So again, I thank you and I'll give the planning board a call or the planning committee a call tomorrow morning. Okay?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good evening.
Up next, we have Zoom Identifier Cassandra Cullen. Cassandra, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record. Present your comments to council and please remember the three-minute timer.
Thank you, guys. Hi, my name's Cassandra. I'm the owner at 121 Flag Pond Road. And I'd like to start by voicing my concern in regards to the transition of the parcel of land on the frontage of Flag Pond Road from low residential to industrial. And I do think that there is an inconsistent presentation of information. So I guess I'd like to start with that. My neighbor Katrina Vitello at 116 Flag Pond Road received email correspondence from Mr. Hamblin on March 1st. This email was forwarded to Mayor Doyle and it was in regards to the zoning of the parcel of land on the frontage of Flag Pond Road. Katrina shared this correspondence with me. The information indicated that the industrial lot could support three to six buildings and a staff of up to 125 people per day. In the past week, Mr. Clark has initiated correspondence or attempt to communicate with me here at Flag Pond Road, 121, with the initial attempt being last Thursday, March 4th. I was unavailable at the time, but I did thoroughly read through over the letters. He left at the residence and I was able to communicate with my neighbors who were able to meet with him directly. Upon Mr. Clark speaking with my neighbor Marilyn Ives at 133 Flag Pond Road, there was evidence of cross-communication. In this conversation between Marilyn and Mr. Clark, he verbally disagreed with the referenced email. Mr. Clark responded to Marilyn, indicating the information from the email via Katrina and the town was not factual and that Mr. Clark proceeded to notion that his lot would not support, would support a much smaller scale of traffic and interruption to Flag Pond Road community. After reading the letters thoroughly from Mr. Clark, I'm concerned with paragraph number five from his first letter, and I'm not sure if you guys have access to his letters. But it does quote, "At that time and continuously since 2009, we have understood from multiple city employees and representatives that the access from the industrial land we purchased was available and allowed from Flag Pond Road." So I feel like the planning board, I do know that the planning board voted against the conversation, the conversion of the parcel of land from low residential to industrial. So I'm unsure why this letter from Mr. Clark directly implements the understanding of the parcel of land via Flag Pond Road was always available and allowed to him. I feel at this time, I feel that the timing and inconsistent presentation of information to the local residents of Flag Pond Road puts us at a disadvantage to make an educated decision. I would like to see that Mr. Clark and the city council readdress the information and come to an agreement on how the land can be used and educate the local residents of Flag Pond Road on how this will impact the ecology, the wildlife, the traffic flow, and the overall development of the neighborhood. Thank you for listening and considering the needs of Flag Pond Road and the community around us. We're a tight-knit group of families and we are engaged in preserving the land and the community around us.
Thank you, Cassandra. Up next, we have Zoom Identifier Jeff Broschu. Jeff, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council. And again, please remember the three-minute timer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Jeff Broschu. I reside at 257 Buxton Road. Just wanted to comment briefly on your action item B, which has to do with the Chapter 81 process for the Camp Alice parcels. Just wanted to point out, I'm sure that you're all aware, we have many, many documents that we all try to continuously guide the city by. I mean, the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, partially page 170, the Land Use Implementation Strategies in Section 6, has an activity that says, "Review existing open space, city-owned parcels, stream corridors, and parcels enrolled in state taxation programs with the goal of establishing a green belt of linked undeveloped spaces for recreation, environmental, and wildlife preservation." I think we'd all agree that, you know, beachfront access, particularly of the Seven Miles of Sacco Bay, is a pretty substantial feature to our community. Comprehensive Plan update obviously goes on even further in Section 7, more specifically to beach management, line item 5. For those properties that have ownership rights beachside to the lower watermark, the city should continue to obtain access easements for the purpose of ongoing maintenance and repairs. So the Comprehensive Plan Group obviously identified, you know, we have continuing issues down there with storm erosion. So for all those reasons where the city is already poised and has ownership for these parcels, which could expedite the repair efforts that may need to take place, as well as for all the taxpayers of the city who, you know, help ultimately fund some of those repairs, for them to have access to that beach area, I think would be in the best interest to retain those parcels for both maintenance and recreational purposes for the city of Sacco. Those are my comments and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Up next, we have Zoom Identifier Victoria. Victoria, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council. Please remember the three-minute timer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Victoria Frankel. I am the owner at 126 Flag Pond Road. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live directly across from Cassandra and I echo all of her comments. At this point, what we've been told by Mr. Clark and some sort of informal correspondence with the city planner from where we sit, it sort of feels like not everybody is on the same page. And I'm just really hoping that if city council decides that spot zoning in a residential area is the best thing for the city of Sacco, that this process has been really well thought out and there's a plan moving forward. And if there is a plan, I'm hoping that we can be privy to that, like Cassandra said, so that everybody's sort of making an informed decision. That said, I'm against the proposed change to industrial zoning at 148 Flag Pond Road. I really feel that changing the zoning from low-density residential to industrial would fragment our community, which is pretty close-knit and we all plan to stay there for the foreseeable future. I know that there's some new housing development going on up the street, which I think really will be an asset. However, I don't, I don't see an industrial zone right in the middle of our neighborhood being an asset. We are already subject to light, noise, and air pollution from Route 1 on one side, I-95 on the other, not to mention the heavy commuter traffic that's on Flag Pond Road itself. However, if city council decides this is the best thing for the city of Sacco, I'm asking that you deny access from Flag Pond Road to the proposed industrial park. The other concerns I have are, like Cassandra, mainly in regard to the environment. Soil from eroding nearby sites is the number-one polluter of main rivers, brooks, ponds, wetlands. And Cascade Brook is a really important part of the Scarborough Marsh ecosystem. So I would feel better if I knew that the brook really was being protected and I'm hoping for a little bit more transparency as this process moves along. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Next is Zoom Identifier Paul Herson. Paul, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council. Please remember the three-minute timer.
Okay, Paul Herson, 117 Flag Pond Road. I think there's been some miscommunication between the planning office in Sacco and Mr. Clark. I know my wife and I appreciated Mr. Clark making two visits here to our house. One of them was last Thursday, one was yesterday. And yesterday, there was a lot of that. He invited the neighborhood, the neighbors, to come meet with him on Sunday, March 14th to look over the, to look over the site. And this would be a time where we could, I would think we could ask questions and voice our concerns and and give Mr. Clark a chance to explain what he's proposing. Yesterday, he told my wife and I that it appears to be something smaller than what we were saying earlier. But the information we got earlier came from the city planner's office. So we'd just like to have everyone on the same page here. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I don't see any other hands raised for public comment. We have two more hands raised. First is Zoom Identifier Rand Clark. Friend, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your your comments to council. Please remember the three-minute time limit. Also, you can speak during the public hearing on item E later on in the evening, but this is the general public comment section.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay.
Great, thank you. My wife, Susan, I are here and we appreciate the opportunity for the public hearing. We were not aware that there was questions until maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago, but as soon as we became aware, we have gone around to the neighborhood between the Turnpike and Route 1 along Flag Pond Road to try and meet people in person and to answer their questions. The first letter was last week, Thursday, that was an introduction of my wife and I and what it is that is the question that we're being asked, that we are asking of the city. And then we went back again. And during that time, we asked people what their questions were and had some good conversations. It was, it was, it was kind of eye-opening and surprising because we were able to get a copy of a letter that was circulated and there just was an awful lot of information that was inaccurate. I don't know why exactly, but it was quite a bit that was inaccurate. So we tried to give factual information to explain that. We've tried to be very, and we are willing to be very transparent. Yesterday was a question-and-answer letter that answered 11 questions. And we have included in each of the letters our name, our names, our address, our mailing address, our phone number, our email, and of course, our phone number for texting. And we have offered to meet with people to do an onsite walk. We have two meetings scheduled so far with people for onsite meetings. And I think that if people will avail themselves of that, that a lot of the mystery and the question will vanish, will go away. In terms of the question that was asked about, I think it was number 121 Flag Pond Road, in terms of how many people might be there, I have a copy of that answer that was posted on the website. And it says, quote, "With no public sewer available at this time, that would be a limiting factor as he'd have to occupy some of the land for septic systems." Then he goes on and I am reading this. This is a quote. It says, to be fair, to be fair to Bob, it says, quote, "So a wild-eyed guess at best assumes five buildings, each 10,000 to 25,000 square feet, and parking space purely hypothetical, but under such a scenario, there'd be 125 employees." It's assuming, and I think we have to understand for Bob's sake and anyone else's, that there's an awful lot that will not be known until there is a prospective tenant. There is somebody who's interested in that place. And then there'll be a site plan review. And all of this will be revealed at that time. And there is no plan. You know, people suggest that there's a plan that they would like to have privy to. There is zoning. But until we know what that use will be, it's not really possible to say or to do a site plan review, but that process will be done by the planning board. It's very thorough and will be considered at that time. It is a pocket use and in our letter, in our questions and answers, we explained that there is 12 acres. And once you deduct for setbacks, water retention onsite, parking, septic systems, it might be boiled down to eight acres.
Mr. Clark, please, please, I hate to interrupt, but you are a minute and a half over the three-minute timeline.
Tell you what, I can elaborate more during the other time, but I just would ask people to avail themselves of meeting with us, call us. And we're happy to answer any questions. And I think that will take away a lot of the concerns and mystery. Thank you.
Up next, we have Zoom Identifier Joni. Joni, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council. Please remember the three-minute timer.
Yes, this is Greg and Johnny at 40 Flag Pond Road. I would just like to first start off, like, I'm a big opponent of growth to the city as far as residential and business, mainly business. This area of Sacco is exploding with residential stuff. And it's nice to see a mix of businesses and residential. But I am concerned with the traffic and I'd like to see more of what the long-term vision is. And I think some thought needs to be, could be put into this. And I noticed Mark Gallos was on earlier. Speaking with Mark over the years, his long-term vision of his 100 acres is to put an industrial park out back that wraps around from Route 1 and circles back on Route 1. And maybe this parcel land could have access to his roadway once the city takes over the roads and the infrastructure in there. I think that would be a good consideration to, for this whole area. But I would also like to, you know, find out a little bit more because this north Sacco region is becoming a superhighway, especially once you get traffic, stoplights at the end of the street. It's, it's kind of crazy that the traffic and to have additional 100 cars and then another additional 300 homes slated up in the area is a lot in the infrastructure. And then this area, this industrial park, are they going to tie into the water? Because the water system, frankly, I'm not sure it could even handle any more put on here because our water pressure is lacking as it is. I have just barely enough water pressure to keep the furnace and keep the shower at a good pressure without taking the flow regulators off. So just through the city council and the planning development and through Mr. Clark, I'd like to see more of what the long-term vision is, the five-year, 10-year, and 50-year plan is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Next up, we have Zoom Identifier Cassandra Cullen. Cassandra, you've been allowed to unmute. If this is related to the changing the public hearing on zoning map amendment, you may want to wait until we come to that in the agenda because this is general public comment. But please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Yes, thank you for that. I apologize. I will stay muted for now.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Moving on from public comment. We are now at item 7 of the agenda, approval of the minutes for February 8th and February 22nd, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Dunn. Discussion on the minutes. Roll call vote on the minutes. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Dunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
No.
Motion passes 5-1, approving of the minutes. Moving on to item eight of the agenda, consent items. There's several consent items on the agenda. Item A, confirm mayor's appointments to Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Douglas Edwards, Genevieve Johnson, Lynn Copeland, and Caroline Zachar. Item B, confirm mayor's appointment to Economic Development Commission, Angie Presby. C, confirm mayor's appointment to Intercultural Competency and Awareness Committee, Melanie Melanie Serrano and Melinda Muller Everett. D, confirm mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Melinda Muller Everett. E, confirm mayor's appointment to Conservation Commission, Alex McFail. F, confirm mayor's reappointments to Economic Development Commission for Betty Brunswick, Stephen Dupley, and Robert Quentin. And then G, confirm mayor's reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Natalie Benhami. And H, combine massage therapist and establishment license for Karina Myers doing business as C Rose Wellness LLC. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Johnston.
Just item A, please.
Item A. Any other?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes, I'd like item D removed.
Item D.
Thank you.
They will be first up on the action items once we get there. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Gunn. Discussion. Roll call vote on the consent agenda items minus A and D. Councilor Archer. Councilor Archer, you're muted.
Thank you.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McFail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. With that, we are at action item, which is item nine on the agenda. We will take up item A first, which was consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda, item A. Confirm mayor's appointments to Parks and Rec Advisory Board for Douglas Edwards, Genevieve Johnson, Lynn Copeland, and Caroline Zachar. Is there a motion to approve those appointments?
Would you like me to read the background, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Johnston.
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was established for the purpose of planning a citywide parks and recreation program and to advise and assist Parks and Recreation Director in initiating and maintaining this program. The board consists of eleven members appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. The responsibility of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board includes responsibility to promote, enhance, and protect recreational opportunities in Saco to maintain and further develop quality of life and to serve as an advisor to the Parks and Recreation Director and as a forum for the discussion of new and creative programs, including needs and requirements of present, future activities, programs, and projects. Be it ordered, City Council confirmed the mayor's appointments of Douglas Edwards, Genevieve Johnson, Lynn Copeland, and Caroline Zachariah for a term to begin on March 8th, 2021, and expiring on June 30th, 2024. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second? A second. A second by Councilor Berman. Discussion. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome Doug and Genevieve and Caroline aboard. Director Summers and the Chair Sue Spath had invited them the last several meetings to basically be guests, get the lay of the land, so to speak. I thought that they all brought immediate positive impacts to the board. They're all relatively due to Saco and have a diversity of backgrounds. So welcome board to them. And then, of course, thanks to Representative Lynn Copeland for staying on the advisory board. I think all of them are welcoming additions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any any other comments? Roll call vote on item A. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McFail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That'll move us to item B, which was consent agenda, item D, and that is confirm the mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission of Melinda Muller Everett. Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission is comprised of five regular members and five associate members. Members serve terms as outlined in sections 230 through 413 of the city's ordinances. Mayor Doyle has recommended the appointment of Melinda Muller Everett to the Historic Preservation Commission as a regular member to serve a three-year term, March 8th, 2021 through March 8th, 2024. Be it ordered that the city council confirms the mayor's appointment of Melinda Muller Everett to the Historic Preservation Commission as a regular member for a three-year term from March 8th, 2021 through March 8th, 2024, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Johnston. Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reason I pulled this is there was two points that were in error when we put this on the agenda. The first point is that it is not to appoint this new person as a regular member. It's actually to appoint them as an associate member. The second point is that it's actually not to commence a full three-year term. It was actually to finish a term that ends in 2022 that was vacated at the end of last year. So the motion should read, appoint Malaya, Melinda Muller Everett to the Historic Preservation Commission as an associate member for a one-year term, which would be from March 8th, 2021 through June 30th of 2022.
Councilor Gunn, you want to make that as amendment?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilor Archer. Discussion on the amendment. Roll call vote on the amendment only. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McFail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Back to the main motion now as amended. Any discussion? A roll call vote on the main motion as amended. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McFail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. With that, may come.
Mr. Mayor. I apologize for interrupting, but before I forget, not only do I want to congratulate the new member, but can I reach out to staff? Because I know we have an HPC meeting tomorrow. And I'm not sure if anyone is in direct contact with her, but no time like the present to get started. So if someone can inform her, so she has the information that she needs to be on the meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Gunn. City Administrator Ken Rath will inform the city clerk, Michelle Hughes, that the council has taken an affirmative action to appoint Ms. Melinda Muller Everett to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the city clerk will be in touch with Ms. Everett.
Thank you.
With that, we are at what is, we are at action item A, which is now action item C, a first, excuse me, a final reading of 146 Main Street Contracts. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. River House Realty LLC requests that the city consider approving a contract zone that would allow a greater density for proposed residential units in the buildings of that 146 Main Street. The parcel is about 6,969 square feet in area, was acquired by the current owner in February 2018. John Miley, manager of the property, has submitted a request for contract zone review. The goal of converting existing office space on the second and third floors to 12 residential units. Given the size of the parcel and the required minimum lot area per dwelling unit, 1,500 square feet in the B3 zone, no more than four residential units would be possible. Mr. Miley's request is that the minimum lot area per dwelling unit be reduced to 560 square feet, which would allow 12 units to be created. The site was reviewed by the planning board at its January 5th meeting. The board arrived at a deposit finding on each of the four standards found in section 230-1405F and voted for deposit recommendation to the council. Motion by second, doesn't make sense. I move to approve the second and final reading and adopt the findings in the Contract Zone document entitled Contract Zone Agreement Fine between River House Realty LLC and the City of Saco dated January 5th, 2021. The property identified as tax map 38 lot 4 is authorized by section 1405, the zoning ordinance pursuant to 30A MRSA, section 43528.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Discussion. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. I just, again, I think I said this several weeks ago. But there were some questions last week during the public hearing, so I just would address those. The building that we're speaking of is known as the Sweeter Block. This particular section of the building happens to be the the long portion closest to the river. I think generally speaking, if you believe in land use and land regulation as or zoning as I do, contract zones really should be a high bar for them to be agreed upon. In this particular case, we're talking about a real minor request that without really would leave a lot of unutilized space, you know, further unutilized. So I mean, this this particular request is definitely consistent with the comprehensive plan. And I think it would be a benefit to the downtown. It passes all other requirements, including parking, which is usually something I get hung up on. So, you know, as I said weeks ago, when we had undertaken the the zoning process, the hope was really to not have the issue we have today, which is, you know, trying to achieve greater density, but our core ordinance doesn't really allow for it. You know, towards, I guess I'd call it like, you know, the 11th hour, we had arrived at a a conclusion of NA or not applicable as far as the density for the downtown and our attorney told us, you know, that you couldn't have not applicable. So given that it was so late in the stage, I had, I just fell back on what the average was for the two zones, the B3 and the MU one and arrived at the 1,500. So, long story short, I hope going forward that we'll readdress this in a subsequent amendment and arrive at a minimum lot area per dwelling unit that's, you know, much more appropriate for what we're trying to do downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any other discussion on this item? Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to present, I think that this is a good example of how the city should look at infill. It allows for increased density with limited disruptions to the area. Again, they're not really changing the blueprint of this brick building that's been around for hundreds of years. So again, I just wanted to say that when I look at infill, I think this is a great example of how we should be looking for further development of these types of buildings in that type of area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Archer. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor McFail.
Yes.
Councilor McFail.
Did that come, yes.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. Bear with us all, folks. It looks like we're having a little bit of technical difficulties here, but we'll we'll stay the course and we'll get through it. With that, we are at action item B, which now becomes action item D, a final reading on chapter 81, Camp Ellis Parcels. Councilor Berman.
Yes, thank you. The city has received requests from three Camp Ellis property owners to consider the sale of three small city-owned parcels that abut parcels owned by the three individuals. In two of the cases, a conveyance of the small city-owned parcel would allow the two individuals to realize a somewhat larger property while still being non-conforming due to not meeting minimum lot size. The third would result in two non-conforming parcels being combined to result in a conforming lot in terms of lot area. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its January 5th meeting. The board forwards unanimous recommendation that the city retain each of the three lots and that maintenance and public access are optimized if the lot remains in the public realm. So I'd like to read, be it ordered that the city council hereby authorizes the city administrator to initiate the sale of the properties identified as tax map 1, lots 31, 36, and 42.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. Discussion. Councilor Berman.
Yeah, I think this will be maybe the third time I've said this, but two important aspects of this for me are that the city put into place during the sale easements to allow access for any erosion mitigation or any necessary work down there. And we have in our packet information that that's entirely possible. So I think some of the concerns about the city having access for that purpose can easily be met. I've also heard concerns about beach access for the public. I don't think any of these plots are commonly used for beach access. And people intending to buy the properties don't intend to block anyone's use or transit to the property. So I'm perfectly comfortable that the city can sell these properties and address the concerns that we've heard from neighbors. It brings these onto the tax roll and off of the city. So I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you, Councilor Berman. Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. As I said several weeks ago, I, you know, I appreciate all the feedback, you know, those in favor or the butters, I guess, that are in favor of purchasing the property and and those against the sale or or not in favor. But I still, as I sit here today, I think this is a premature action. You know, it's cart before the horse. And I recognize that we can get certain things into the deeds, and I certainly would encourage that if we are to to sell this. But I still have have questions and concerns that all surround around the Army Corps. You know, we seem to be as close as we ever have in the history of this issue. And I'm concerned that, you know, we may get to that PPA and they're looking for us to acquire additional land, and here we are, having sold it off. So one of the things I would suggest, again, if council is going to move ahead with this, is that we look to put some kind of restriction on this land that would allow us to buy back the land that we are selling at our purchase price or at the purchaser's price. If we find in the future that we, you know, need additional land based on, you know, this Army Corps project. But again, I think we're kind of opening up ourselves for further or greater issues. I mean, we have several other lots down there that city owns. Are we going to sell those? I mean, one of them happens to be the beach. Itself, it used to be a house back in there till the early 1990s. When I was a kid, I remember washing it washing away. I mean, if you really take a look at all the lots down there and you see how many the city owns, you know, again, I think you're opening ourselves up to saying, hey, I want to buy that. And then we've set a precedent here with this. And as Jeff Broschu pointed out, the comp plan in 2018, we actually added a chapter related to shoreland issues, and it's pretty specific as to trying to maintain that access because we don't know what's going to happen going forward. And it's pretty specific as to trying to maintain that access because we don't know what's going to happen going forward. So, that's my feeling on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any other comments? Councilor Johnston?
If no other councillor has any comments, I would just ask the administrator, what's the plan going forward if this motion prevails? Will this come back? Chapter eighty one is pretty clear as far as how we go about selling properties. And the way I read it, there's nothing in there that's just an outright agreement or a sale. It's either we go out for a bid, we request bids or proposals. So, you know, I guess that would be, if this is, you know, voted in favor of, are you just going to sign something or is this coming back to council for us to vote it on again?
Counselor, I would want to follow the chapter eighty one process by the letter of letter read. So, I would, I guess tomorrow consult with our city solicitor and planning staff and determine what the appropriate next step would be. But obviously, we want to follow chapter eighty one as written. But I don't recall an instance, at least since I've been here, where this has happened. So, I would need to myself just brush up on exactly what the procedure is.
Thank you. Well, again, it's clear that council decides how we sell it. So, I don't know if that's something we need to decide now or if that's something, you know, yourself and the rest of city staff will go and bring us some ideas as to how I go about doing this. In the past, when I've participated in it, we did a sealed bid process where everybody, anybody really in the city of Saco could have been a purchaser. As with what the way this has been presented so far is it's just the abutters that are being afforded this opportunity, which, as I've said previously, I think is an unfair process.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any other comments? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with this, I've actually talked with the owner too, and thank you for that perspective. I've been going fifty fifty on this one because I see benefits and I see barriers to both sides of them. And most recently, I think a lot of the barriers are what's popping up in my mind. And I want to bring up, it was probably about a month ago, we're talking about the Main Turnpike Authority. And they sold, there's a new house, it's, I think it's One North Street or out this way. It's right there where the turnpike entrance is going to be. And in discussions with Main Turnpike Authority, they, in the end, they wish they didn't sell the land. It's creating all these headaches because they sold the land for about twenty thousand. And now they're trying to build a park and ride and exit right where that house is. This, unfortunately, this happened to came at the same time as this, so these concerns are fresh in my mind. And again, it's not that I, it's not about the owner or that, it's again, that the city only has so much land and land is a finite resource. I definitely see the owner's intent, the abutters' intent and what they're doing. And I also honestly understand their vision. It's just I have various concerns, again, with Councilor Johnston bringing up. I do not want to throw a wrench into the Army Corps of Engineers. This could be or not be, let me just say, it's unknown at this time. But I'd hate for this to be a wrench down the road that we have to then figure out again. With that said, when we vote on a motion as written, we're pretty much saying this is how it's going to go. And I do have concerns of not having in the language of how the city is going to retain ownership post-sale, if they ever do first of right refusal, issues like that, or how we're going to have access. And it's not written in the motion. And unfortunately, I don't have an amendment at this time, a good written amendment. So, minus a good written amendment, I'm going to vote this down. However, if I can protect the city's interest in the long run, I'd be for it. But as written, I'm not for it.
Thank you, Council Archer. Any other comments? Hearing no other comments, a roll call vote. Council Archer?
No.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
No.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
With the uncertainties of the Army Corps going forward, I need to go no.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion fails two four. Moving on to item C, what was item C, now item E. That is a public hearing that was tabled from March first, two thousand twenty one, a special entertainment permit for Riverwind Events. Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beth Austin Doom Business says RW Events LLC, one twenty one Loudon Road, has applied for a new special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit and fees, and the clerk has properly advised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, chapter ninety three, Entertainment subsection ninety three, tech two. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by Beth Austin D V A, RW Events LLC for a special entertainment permit for private events only as per the current contract zone agreement. In said permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license, I move to approve the order.
Council Archer, I, hold on. I think we have to take it off the table.
That's correct. Because it was tabled. I stumbled on, but I figured I'd just continue reading it.
If you can make the motion to untable?
I, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to untable the application for a special entertainment permit for RW Events LLC.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote on untabling. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Time table. Council Archer, can you repeat the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what was actually, why I was stumbling over words was my brain was processing what I was reading and it wasn't connecting. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by Beth Austin Doom Business says RW Events LLC for a special entertainment permit for private events only as the current contract zone agreement and said permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Council Archer, second by Council McFail. Discussion. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I didn't see many changes in our packet, so I guess I'm asking staff, whoever that may be, all of those involved, where we are as of today. And I guess specifically for myself, did Mr. or Attorney Murphy's opinion change at all? Because he seemed to have several lengthy opinions, but so that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Can we promote Code Enforcement Officer Toomey?
Hello, this is David Toomey, Code Enforcement Director. Basically, River Winds has got a C O, so that issue's gone by. We're all set with all other issues. I have talked to this city attorney and this department believes that this permit shall be issued.
Thank you, Director Toomey. You, please stay with us as there may be some more questions.
Okay.
Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up that how this was presented at a last meeting was, was, I wish we had more information because, again, this council could have made a decision based on bad information, which would have substantially hurt one of our local businesses. I'm glad that this was tabled because it allowed us to clear up a lot of information because once reviewed, we realized we had everything that we needed. I don't want to see this happen again to one of our businesses. Again, we need to get the most accurate information, the council is what I'm saying, before some of these decisions are made. So, I'm so glad that the council had the foresight to say, hey, we don't know if we have all the information. We should slow it down. We should look at it. But again, this could have gone the other way where we canceled someone's ability to make a profit in this city in this time because we had, I don't want to call it bad information, but not all the information. So, I would like to make sure that this doesn't happen again and that we continue to table if we do get these E B G Bs. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Archer. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. It was a little unclear to me through all the information with where we stood with the plumbing issue or bathrooms. So, if Director Toomey could comment on that, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Council Johnston. Director Toomey?
Hi, basically, they have a bathroom trailer, which is fine. It's the state who has an issue, but where they're running the number of people, they're good. They will work with the state in the future to add permanent bathrooms if they change what they have. But what they have on the agenda for now, those bathrooms will work. So, there's no problem with the existing bathrooms unless they change their business plan.
Thank you, Director Toomey. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. No, he answered my questions. I'm all set with that. I just, I think going forward, perhaps we should relook at this chapter of the code because when you look at state law, it has more provisions that we could add that would kind of prevent any of this in the future because we could make it, again, clear where in this particular case, perhaps it's not. Because, again, going back to seventeen, when I was on council, I was under the understanding, I had the understanding that we were going to have permanent bathrooms out there. But that's a whole nother topic. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Berman?
Yeah, I think in regards to plumbing, there was some question about sprinklers in the barn too. Has that been resolved?
Director Toomey?
They actually put a two-hour firewall between the barn and the house, which makes the requirement of a sprinkler system not required because it separates them as two separate buildings. And the barn isn't big enough that requires it on itself. So, they're all set with not needing sprinklers.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Toomey. And thank you, Councilor Berman. Director Toomey, would it be possible as, not for tonight's hearing, but as the Riverwind Farms is going through the planning process to update their contract zone or broaden their use of their contract zone, would it be possible to put some of these concerns into that contract zone through that process?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing no further questions and seeing no councillor seeking recognition, roll call vote. Council Arch?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. We are item, action item D, which is now item F. And that is a public hearing zoning amendment to add master plan development as a permitted use in the Portland Road District. This was assigned to Councilor Johnston, and I believe Councilor McFail read it last time. Councilor McFail, do you want to read or, Councilor Johnston, let me defer to you first. Would you like to read this or would you like to defer to Councilor McFail?
I'm all about consistency, so we'll stick with Councilor McFail.
Thank you very much. Councilor McFail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The amendment for adding master plan development as a permitted use in the Portland Road District was brought forth as part of the zoning ordinance approval process at the January eleventh, two thousand twenty one council meeting. Upon consultation with legal counsel, it was advised that the city council refer the amendments back to the planning board for review, public hearing, and report to the city council based upon subsection two thirty dash fourteen oh one B of the zoning ordinance. The planning board held the public hearing on this amendment on February second, two thousand twenty one. After discussion, the board voted seven oh in support of its December first, two thousand twenty recommendation that master plan development be removed from the Portland Road zoning district and that the board's goal will be to refine the M P D standards for incorporating into the ordinance in the near future. I move to open the public hearing.
Council McFail has made a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy? Discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote on opening the public hearing. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at seven thirty seven P M. There's anyone who would like to speak to the council during the public hearing? Please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine from a phone. At this point, we have one hand raised, and that is Zoom identifier Kevin Sutherland. Kevin, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Sutherland, fifteen North Street. I had offered to provide additional context to this item and the next one, which I'll save that for then. For the goals of the Portland Road, there was a lot of conversation around nodes, concept of nodes. This piece really was a solution to allow for one developer to take a large lot and actually think about it as a mixed-use lot. So, multiple different iterations or ideas or concepts could be developed in one false loop. I support the idea of this to be done in our city. Obviously, the planning board has said they want to modify it. They're welcome to, but I think that the best solution for the council at this time is to try to move this forward with those modifications for the Portland Road. Again, it's about density where utilities exist. Portland Road is route one which takes us between Bedford and Saco and downtown Portland. It's where the transportation system is. It's where now sewer exists along that road. So, this is where our density should occur, not on the other side of ninety five. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. If there's anybody else who would like to speak during the public comment, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to deliver your comments to council. Up next, we have Zoom identifier Jeff Broschu. Jeff, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to this council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jeff Broschu. I reside at two fifty seven Buxton Road. I've also been a member of the planning board through this process, but I'd like to speak to you personally on my behalf. You know, having observed this process, I think that the overall consensus is that master plan development, it's a very critical tool that we need to have available in our town for a lot of the reasons that you've heard tonight. Our ability to offset our tax base, our ability to control density in areas where we strategically want to. All in all, it's a general tool, a very good tool. But I think what we find as we really navigate through the process is that the master plan development tool has been sitting on the shelf since two thousand and thirteen. It's been there. It hasn't been utilized. It hasn't been tested. Oh, well, actually, I take that back. It has just recently been tested. It's like the first time we went to use it. And we discovered in that process that there are a lot of pieces that don't work. So in basic analogy, like any other tool that we might have around our home or in our kitchen, you know, something that helps us, you know, remove snow or, you know, peel and core apples in the kitchen. If you find a tool in your kitchen that you know could cause a serious laceration or dismemberment, most reasonable people would want to fix that tool before they hand it to their children or grandchildren. And I think that recent, um, application of exercising this tool for the first time really pointed that out. It pointed out that there are several dangerous components to it that need to be repaired. They need to be repaired for the future of our community. And I think that's what the the consensus of the planning board and the Z O R committee was really getting at. Hey, we know that this is a great, great opportunity, but we need to repair these things before we allow it to be implemented and let our loved ones use it, if you will. So, um, I would just respectfully ask that you 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 realize that that is the ultimate mission. We want to allow the city to have this tool, but we've identified that there are really some dangerous portions to it. Um, and dangerous in multiple levels. I mean, once the development's done, we we can't control it. Um, but it also, I think it's not really fair to applicants. The the way the the standards are worded and we try to apply them, it's very difficult, um, to know what needs to be done when. And that, I think, is really what the the planning department is is asking for, or maybe not the department, but the board was referencing. And, um, I would just ask that, you know, recognize it is a a very viable opportunity um, and that we recognize that we just want to try to repair it before we allow somebody else to try to give it a run through so that, you know, prospective developers don't end up with a disappointing flavor of the city of Saco saying that they had this opportunity and they treated us unfairly or or inappropriately. So I would just ask that, you know, you give us that opportunity um, or maybe reform the Z O R committee to relook at this before we implement it in the Portland Road District. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I have no more hands raised for public, during the public hearing. Counselor Archer? I'm sorry, Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the second and final reading of zoning ordinance amendment to add master plan development as a permitted use in the Portland Road District for March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy to close the public hearing and set final reading for March twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Any discussion? Counselor Archer?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, um, uh, just kind of build off what our our citizen, Mr. Broschew just stated. Uh, when this, a couple of weeks ago, I brought up the idea of that we need to learn more of what this is. The city, the city does, the council does, our citizens do. And I did bring up the idea of a moratorium so that we can learn more about, as Mr. Broschew Broschew said, the tools. If you don't know how to use the tool correctly, you can get yourself some danger. So again, I will bring that back up, that I believe this should be a moratorium. Um, I don't, I don't know where I stand, but if we vote this for or down, we can't bring it up again for a year. A moratorium would allow us to learn this tool better, to have it in our arsenal, to bet for better economic development. So again, we, this will come back to us at our next meeting. Um, but I definitely think this is something that we should have a discussion on. Again, from a perspective of not delaying it, but to have everyone learn exactly what this is and how to best use it in the interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to what was action item E, which is action item G. And that is a public hearing zoning map amendment for the parcels on Flag Pond Road, previously zoned low density residential to be rezoned industrial. Counselor Johnston, that was, uh, assigned to you. Do you want to defer, as we've done, uh, in the previous cases to Counselor McPhail?
Please.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Landowners Rand and Susan Clark have requested a zoning map amendment for portions of two parcels on Flag Pond Road. Roughly one point five acres of the parcel are zoned R dash one A currently. They would become low density residential upon adoption of the new zoning map and are requested to be rezoned to industrial. This amendment was brought forth as part of the zoning ordinance review process at the January eleventh, twenty twenty one council meeting. Upon further consultation with legal counsel, it was advised that the city council refer the amendments back to the planning board for review, public hearing and report to the city council based upon section two thirty dash fourteen oh one B of the Saco zoning ordinance. The planning board held the public hearing on this amendment on February second, twenty twenty one. At that meeting, the board voted five one to forward a negative recommendation for the proposed rezoning. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote on opening the public hearing. Counselor Archer? Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing at seven forty seven P M. Public hearing is now open. If there's members of the public would like to address the council, please use the raise hand feature or star nine and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. First up, we have Zoom identifier Kevin Sutherland. Kevin, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Zoom identifier Kevin Sutherland, fifteen North Street. Um, I wanted to just, uh, uh, su- support what, uh, Counselor Johnson said two weeks ago. There are challenges with getting to this site for sure. Um, the hope was to do it off a wily road. Um, but again, that cock crosses the DeFossis property and there'd have to be, uh, agreements with her, although I think her hopeful, her goal would be to make that all private roads. So there will be challenges regardless of what the council decides tonight in terms of whether or not this, they allow for it to be an industrial zone. Um, but I think changing it to industrial is an extension of what's, what it's near. Um, but not also it's near the low residential. Ultimately, it would be beneficial for this whole, that whole stretch of the city to eventually, uh, become denser. Uh, does that include industrial? That's for you to decide. Um, I, I, I still think the challenge will be getting it through, uh, sightline issues on Flag Pond Road and other traffic constraint challenges they're, they'll, they'd have to face with any type of project that went in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, up next, we have Zoom identifier Inga Brown. Inga, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Yes, hi, good evening, uh, Inga Brown, uh, one sixty one Simpson Road. Um, I apologize, I'm going to throw a left field, uh, question at you, Mayor Doyle. I'm looking at the agenda, um, for this evening. And item C, the special entertainment permit for Riverwind's farm was listed as a public hearing, as was item D, as was item E. Uh, was the public going to, had, should the public have been allowed to speak during item C?
Uh, Inga, that the item C was a tabled motion from a previous, uh, previous meeting where we held the, uh, where we already held the public hearing on that item.
Correct.
It was tabled, it was untabled, uh, and moved forward.
Would it be helpful in the future, the way that it's listed on the agenda, if one looks at item C? It does look identical to the other public hearings listed. It says public hearing in, um, parentheses. That is confusing.
Thank you. I will notify city administration, uh, that handles the writing of these documents, uh, and and note that confusion.
I was prepared to speak this evening on item C, so my regrets that I was not able to do that.
You remember, uh, Ms. Brown, you can always speak during public comment, uh, and that it was, uh, item six on the agenda. Anyone can speak during public comment.
Even at the beginning of the meeting.
Correct.
Right, but I was looking at it listed as a public hearing, the way that it's listed, so that is, uh, very confusing to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, up next, we have Zoom identifier Victoria. Victoria, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council.
Hi, my name is Victoria Frankel, owner at one two six Flag Pond Road. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak twice tonight. I apologize that I entered my comment a little bit prematurely there at the beginning of the meeting. But I am against the proposed zoning change to industrial on Flag Pond Road. Our community is close knit. There's housing developments being built on the other side of the overpass. I am confident that the new housing will, um, add to the community. I don't see how an industrial zone in the middle of a rural farm-like neighborhood is going to to add to that community at all. We're already subject to light, noise and air pollution from Route one, from I ninety five, as well as the heavy commuter traffic on Flag Pond Road itself. Uh, in addition to the integrity of the neighborhood, I'm also concerned about the fallback this project might have on the environment, namely the brook, um, potential soil erosion, um, could be devastating to Scarborough Marsh. Um, and I, I, I'm hoping that throughout this process, I know there's already a lot of logging going on, that there can be, um, hopefully a little bit more transparency for those of us who are really concerned about the environment um, in our backyard. Um, I'm also concerned about potential groundwater pollution. I mean, even if this indus- industry, I mean, if it's just a parking lot, for instance, um, doesn't need to be a building, there will be runoff. And I know that a lot of my neighbors don't have wells, but I have a well. Um, and I really would, um, like to know what Mr. Clark is proposing to prevent industrial, um, runoff. And I also would encourage the, uh, city to, um, ask that Mr. Clark is responsible for sustainability and environmental stewardship. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Any other members of the public that would like to speak during the public hearing on zoning map amendment for the parcels on Flag Pond Road, previously zoned, uh, low density residential to be rezoned industrial? You have Zoom identifier Cassandra Collin. Cassandra, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you so much. Um, Cassandra Collin at one twenty one Flag Pond Road. And also, um, I apologize for giving the abundance of information at the opening hearing. Um, this is my first time speaking at the city council meeting, so I believe that my information probably would have been better suited at this moment. Um, so please take into consideration what I said previously. Also, I am considering or concerned with the change, the considerable change on the Flag Pond Road west of Mr. Clark's, Clark's proposed change. And, um, he did provide us with a letter again yesterday on March seventh that I would like to reference. Um, I'd like to reference number three on his letter, which, uh, question says, has any development already been conducted or approved at this parcel? And he refers to, um, nothing has even been proposed yet. No development has been planned or approved yet. However, there will be many steps in the process to getting approvals, including a site plan review by the Saco Planning Board, with the consideration of what we can locate there at its impact. So this, I feel, is contraindicated of the meeting early February on the twenty second of the planning board, which denied Mr. Clark's approval of this, um, change in parcels. So I'm concerned as to why this is still being considered. Also, I'd like to, um, draw attention to number eight, which Mr. Clark said, what about screens and sound barriers? There is one row of matured trees between one forty eight Flag Pond Road and the nearest neighborhood. Should the proposed access be granted, a driveway access is placed there. We have agreed to put an additional row rows of evergreen trees to screen sight and buffer the sound. However, Mr. Clark has already moved forward with the clearing of that lot. So I'm concerned that if he had not ever cleared the lot, we wouldn't actually have a sound barrier issue. So why, um, would he have cleared it in the first place? Mr. Clark also personally addressed a lot of my neighbors, um, in terms of walking the property with him. I'd like to have the opportunity to visit the land and the considerations before the public city council meeting. And I, again, reiterate the inconclusiveness of the information and the timing of information provided to me as well as my neighbors. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. Uh, up next, we have Zoom identifier Rand Clark. Rand, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to council.
Sure. I just want to request, oh, sorry, Rand Clark, address forty one River Ridge Drive, Dayton, Maine. Just wanted to confirm that the letters, I believe there's at least eight letters in support of this, uh, that they will be read this evening during the public hearing and entered into the public record, please.
Rand, those, uh, those items that were delivered to the city will be incorporated into the, uh, document that goes online. Uh, but they will be not read into the record unless they were specifically asked to be read into the record uh, by those folks submitting them to the city administrator in accordance with the rules uh, of the council, uh, when we first entered the pandemic.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then let me just say that Susan and I have made ourselves completely transparent. So far, we've only received one phone call. Um, we have taken the initiative to meet with people and we really are genuine and sincere to say that we'd be happy to schedule one-on-ones or whatever you would like at the site. We have two scheduled currently, two different ones. Um, and I think for those that we've had an opportunity to meet with, and I know obviously it's an emotional issue, but after folks have spoken with us and really come to understand, they seem to feel much more comfortable with the idea of this. In fact, we believe that the impact to traffic and things like that will be less than the development that's going on currently for fourteen homes on the corner of Jenkins and Flag Pond Road. I quote, "With twelve to twenty-five to forty employees, even if a few commercial buildings are eventually developed, the projected number of daily vehicle trips is liable to result in negligible impact on existing roads and intersections." That was from the staff, the planning department. In terms of what's happened currently, the land has simply been logged. Selective cutting and then some more open cutting where we would propose that some development would go on. Um, we have offered to donate. We have offered to donate land on both sides of Cascade Brook as a park to the city. There is currently an easement for a walking trail as well. We have never posted our land and have made it available to anybody who would like to walk there, walk their dog, anything like that. It's our hopes that that trail would extend the Sylvan Trail across the street. The area is treed. We intend to leave it treed. And all of those things, the wetlands, the vernal pools, and the area along the brook will be completely protected. We will submit to all of the requirements. And I'll just end by saying that in terms of line of sight, the requirement is 390 feet. We are able to give an access that would be 775 feet, almost double of what's required. So we believe that we have been good citizens of the community and that neighborhood more than 12 years, and we would like to continue to contribute in a positive way to that neighborhood and to the city of Saco, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rand. Up next, we have Zoom identifier Paul Hershey. Paul, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the council.
Yes, my name is Paul, excuse me, Paul Hershey, 117 Flag Pond Road. I discussed this with Mr. Clark yesterday when he visited my home at 117 Flag Pond Road about the low water pressure on Flag Pond Road. I am on public water. And earlier this evening, I believe the gentleman stated his address was 40 Flag Pond Road. Also mentioned about the low water pressure on this road. First thing in the morning, very, very low water pressure. So my concern, and I shared this with Mr. Clark yesterday, is whatever goes in for a business, well, first, if this is a zone change and the council does approve it, then whatever goes in there is going to need water. So is this going to be addressed and when is it going to be addressed? Because if you start adding more demand on water from the water line on Flag Pond Road, it's going to affect other residents on the road. Victoria says she is lucky enough to still have a drilled well. I don't know how many other residents on Flag Pond Road still have their well. But I think most of us, at least on the west end of Flag Pond Road before the turnpike, have public water. And it is a concern with low water pressure certain times of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I don't see any other hands raised for public. Up next, we have Zoom identifier Greg Schinberg. Greg, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council and members of the community. My name is Greg Schinberg. I am a consultant for Rand and Susan Clark, and my office is at 181 State Street in Portland. I wanted to try to answer some of the questions and concerns, very legitimate ones raised by the neighbors on Flag Pond. And a few of them, Rand briefly mentioned, groundwater runoff. That certainly would need to be addressed at a planning board meeting, as is typical of any planning board meeting. You need to be able to handle any kind of runoff. And if there's sensitive areas like the Cascade Brook, there certainly are requirements that you have to be well back of the brook and you have to mitigate any problems that would come from your building, whether it's impervious surfaces, building roofs, et cetera. In regards to the water pressure out there, any project that would need to be approved by a planning board would also need typically things like the ability to serve layers, not just water, but electricity, et cetera. Out on these lots, which could handle, like I believe has been mentioned earlier, five to seven buildings possibly, given the 80,000 square foot zone out there on 12 acres, you're about five to seven buildings because of the issues we just discussed. You could have private wells. Or you could have a plan to boost the water pressure. But there are ways to deal with this, and this would be a planning board site plan review issue that should be addressed. Certainly, the environmental issues are key over on the Cascade Brook area. You have a wide area, probably 200 to 400 feet either side of Cascade Brook, that is undevelopable. And behind 148 Flag Pond, there's many areas of the industrial land that go all the way down Flag Pond behind some of the other folks, including, I believe, these folks that have spoken tonight. And there's a lot of wet land there, so it's really not developable land, even though it's zoned industrial. This is probably one of the most important points is that when you look at the new proposed zoning map for the city, I'm going to guess that 95% of the land north of the I-95 corridor is either the PR zone or the industrial zone. And it's been like that for a long time. And I certainly understand where folks on Flag Pond are concerned about development around them. I think it's fair to say that there has been the potential for development around them for a long time, coming in from the Portland Road to the north of them, to the south of them. There's a tremendous amount of developable land. And the amount of current R1A, which is going to be the LDR zone property, is pretty minimal. And if I'd like to finish, and I'll try to keep it very brief, I think it's important to note that with the letters that came in about the Clarks, were many letters that talked about their integrity. They've been property owners in the community for a long time. I'm a consultant that have worked in the greater Portland area for a long, long time, and I've rarely met owners that really listen. They have talked to city officials, they've talked to neighbors, they've talked to consultants like me, traffic engineers, environmental engineers. They've been really careful about approaching this, and they've listened very, very well to the whole process. It's something that should be considered. They're good citizens of the city. They're trying to do the right thing. This property is underused and landlocked, and the potential for a small amount of industrial land, I've heard it called a park, this won't be an industrial park. Nothing like the Saco Industrial Park or the Melbrook Park. It's a very small change to that land. It's right next to the turnpike. There's already access for the turnpike on both sides that they have to Flag Pond. And this just seems to be a sensible way to utilize some very underutilized property with a minimal impact on the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Up next, we have Cassandra Collin. Cassandra, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you so much. Cassandra Collin, 121 Flag Pond Road in Saco. I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Schenberg said or go off of what he said. The multiple letters that we received as residents of 121 Flag Pond Road, we received two of them. Also, I would just like to go off of basically his comments about the planning board deciding what's going to happen. But early in February, when this information was presented to the planning board, the planning board had denied this change in the parcel on 121 Flag Pond Road. So I'm concerned about why this is still being addressed or how they think that the planning board is going to necessarily change what we're thinking. And I also just am concerned with ultimately what's going to go into this. I know that they say that it's not going to be like an industrial park road, but we're not really guaranteed if we necessarily agree with this parcel change, what the outcomes are going to be. So it just seems very vague in terms of the information that we're being presented with. And there isn't really a lot of conclusive information. So again, I'd like to reiterate the fact that I think that this should just be something that is presented back to the planning board or the city council and is just investigated further, and that the residents of Flag Pond Road are presented with information that's more conclusive and is actually, in fact, what's necessarily going to be happening with our neighborhood around us. Thank you. I think that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Cassandra. Last call for public comment. Up next is Zoom identifier Victoria. Actually, we're going to move to somebody who hasn't spoken yet in accordance with the Roberts rules, and that is Zoom identifier Don Gerard. Don, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Don Gerard, member of the planning board residing at 58 Lafayette Street in Saco. Just for the sake of clarity, because folks may misunderstand what the process is involving the planning board, and I just want to make that clear. As is typical with any ordinance change or any amendment to the ordinance, this change to the zoning on the Flag Pond Road came to us as a zoning ordinance amendment. And for those folks who maybe are a little bit confused about the process, the way that works is an ordinance amendment comes before the planning board, and the planning board makes a recommendation to the council as to whether or not the amendment should pass or not. We are not the final authority on whether an amendment to an ordinance happens. And so with that being said, everyone needs to understand that whatever we do is strictly an amendment to the council. The council is the final legislative authority on whether or not the ordinance is amended or not in relation to the issue that's at hand. So just to make that clear, just because the planning board recommended to the council that this change not be made, it is still up to the council legislatively to decide whether or not the change in the zoning will happen. And so I just wanted to make that clear for the record. And additionally, all I'll say is what the planning board's general consensus was on this issue is that because it probably had some far-reaching implications, I think the planning board was inclined, and initially from the beginning, along with the zoning ordinance revision committee, felt that this was an issue that would be better left to the zoning or to the long-range planning committee, excuse me, upon taking up provisions of the new comprehensive plan. And so basically, that's where the planning board was coming from. Let's wait to see what the long-range planning committee says about zoning in general and more specifically about zoning in that area on the Flag Pond Road. So thank you, members of the council. And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you, Don. Up next, we have Zoom identifier Victoria. Victoria, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Thank you. My name is Victoria Frankel, address 126 Flag Pond Road. Just real briefly, I wanted to echo Cassandra Collins' most recent comments and thanks to Mr. Schenberg for addressing some of our concerns. Additionally, I would just like to mention, yeah, we're all pretty well aware of the zoning in the areas surrounding our neighborhood, which frankly, for me, is all the more reason to keep residential with residential and industrial with industrial. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, we have Zoom identifier Greg Schinberg. Greg, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Hi, Greg Schinberg again. And I just wanted to briefly respond to one comment or question made earlier about why it's coming back. And I appreciated Mr. Gerard explaining so well the process of everything. The one thing that we did change and really listened carefully to the planning board was one of the biggest concerns they raised was the line of sight distance from the middle of the bridge coming over the highway to where the entrance to a driveway would be. And with that being a 300 and now 90-foot distance, used to be 350, when we were out there several times, we realized that this is going to be difficult. It's a 35 mile an hour speed limit. You're coming downhill. People tend to go faster. These comments were all shared at the planning board. So what is different is that we then realized it would be better to ask for the entire parcel, not just part of that parcel where the house is, to be industrial so that during a planning board review process and site plan review, the road and the traffic issues, the site plan issues could all be better addressed. And so what's changed from the planning board? The request at planning board was only a part of the parcel to be changed. And we realized it would be better for safety reasons than others to make this change. We were thinking, well, try to bring it back because it might create more buffer, but that seemed to be less important than creating the line of sight safety issues. And you can create a good buffer with screening and transplanting trees and whatnot. So not to say it's not legitimate, but this is a little bit of the evolution of what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Up next, we have Zoom identifier Katrina. Katrina, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Katrina Patel of 116 Flag Pond Road. And I know that I may have jumped on a moment late and I heard Mr. Schenberg's comments about the sight line. I guess my concern is that the process, I feel like the sight line should be addressed before the rezoning. You can't, I mean, you can do whatever you want. But I do second Victoria's thoughts about slowing this down and also keep industrial with industrial. We bought our homes on Flag Pond. We know our backyards are industrial and that I can get into the master plan development down the line. But there's no need to rezone the residential to be industrial so that one person can have access. And I understand that the Clarks are trying to build some, or put some trees in. But those trees have been there for a long time. And so cutting down trees and putting in some couple saplings just doesn't really suffice. And all I would like to say is that a moratorium, not a moratorium, but delaying this so we can get more of an understanding of the Clarks and of what the plan is. And more of an understanding is all I'm really asking for. It's my neighborhood, and I'm sure that you would all feel the same if this was happening a couple doors down from you as well. So I would just like you to think about, you know, it's our neighborhood. So that's, that's most. you know, it's it's our neighborhood. So that's that's mostly what I would like to say right now and um yeah, I'll leave it at that for now. I may chime in later. Thank you.
Thank you, Katrina.
Yep.
There are no other hands raised. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to schedule the second and final reading for the zoning amendment for the parcels on Flagpond Road, previously zoned low density residential to be rezoned to industrial for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion on closing the public hearing and setting the second and final reading for March twenty-second? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero to close the public hearing at eight twenty-two and set final reading for March twenty-second. That moves us on to what was uh item F. Uh, and now will become item H. And that is one reading, an update to the fee schedule for impoundment fees. Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city of Saco dark ordinance sixty-four tax seven impoundment fee allows for the council to update the impoundment fee and boarding fee for dogs. These fees are located in the city of Saco fee and penalty schedule, chapter sixty-four animals. The current fee is twenty-five dollars for each dog impound impoundment in four dollars per day uh, per dog per day for boarding. Each year, the city council will review such fees and update the penalty fees for dog horn sixty-four tax seven impoundment fee, be it ordered that the city council approves keeping the current impoundment fee at twenty-five dollars for dogs and the boarding fee at four dollars per day, per dog per day. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counsel Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you. That moves us to uh item what was item G. And it is now item I. And that is one reading, uh pilot policy, and that's Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Payment in lieu of taxes pilot program is a structured way for municipalities to seek payments from tax exempt property owners. Service charges may be billed to tax exempt properties that are used to provide rental income. Per thirty-six M R S A. Such and by the way, service charges were adopted under chapter one ninety-two of the city code nineteen eighty-nine. However, a dedicated policy is necessary to ensure equitable enforcement. Uh, be it ordered that the city council approve the new pilot policy. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second? Second. Second by Counselor Berman. Discussion. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Um, my question as I was reading over this, at first I thought it was simply a um the reports generated by finance department were going to be informational for city staff. Um, as I read it, I was rereading it. I was wondering, are the are these formulas going to be used to uh calculate the or re- refigure, recalculate the um the pilot agreements that we have with existing entities in Saco?
Counselor Purdy, we are promoting Finance Director Salas uh to answer your question.
Okay.
Finance Director Salas, greetings and welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I apologize, my mic is, there we go.
Were you able to hear Counselor Purdy's question?
I was. Um, so there's two pieces to the to the pilot policy. Um, the first is calculating um service fee costs for all tax exempt properties. That's the informational piece. Uh, the second piece is to calculate service fees for tax exempt properties that are obligated to pay a service fee under chapter one ninety-two, I believe is that is the um city code. And that city code is per main state statute, which allows municipalities to charge a service fee to tax exempt properties whose primary income generation is rental income. Again, the idea is you have residents. They're going to generate more against the tax rate than, let's say, a church building, which is only open once a week. Um, so what this does in the past, um, the ordinance has always stated that us, the service charges should be based on a calculation of service fees. Um, however, in past practice, because there wasn't a policy in place, typically what happened was that uh two percent was two percent of the rental income per the nonprofits. Uh, financial statements is what was billed. So we're trying to move away from that because that wasn't technically what the ordinance says, and it's not what state statute says. The state statute mandates that it be based on an actual calculation of police, fire, public works, that kind of thing. So that's why you have a calculation in there and it will be used um to calculate service charges, but only for those tax exempt properties that owe service fees to the city based on chapter one ninety-two.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing no other questions. A roll call vote on the pilot policy. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Uh, that brings us to what was item H. And is now item J. That is one reading, grants policy, and that is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. In January, the finance department completed an ambitious review of all internal procedures in need of policy coverage. Grants were highlighted as an item that needed more careful consideration and tracking. The city auditor also recommended a process change as part of the annual audit. Finally, the finance department felt it prudent to have guidance in place for city funded grants coming out of the expanded TIF development program. Be it ordered the city council approve the new grants policy. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Johnston. Discussion on the grants policy. Uh, hearing no discussion, nobody seeking recognition. A roll call vote on the grants policy, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Moving on to item I, which is now item K. Uh, one reading, post issuance compliance policy, and that is Counselor Purdy.
In January, the finance department completed an ambitious review of all internal procedures in need of policy coverage. A post issuance compliance policy was recommended to the city of Saco by its bond agent and bonds co- bond council as a way to potentially improve the city's bond rating and generate favorable interest rates. This post issuance compliance policy ensures for full compliance with all applicable regulations for tax exempt bond bond issue issuances. The language has been reviewed by the city's bond council to ensure full full legal compliance. Be it ordered the city council approves the new post issuance compliance policy. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy, second by Counselor Johnston. Discussion on the post issuance compliance policy. Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition, a roll call vote on the the post issuance compliance policy. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Moving on to item J or what was item J now item L, and that's one reading, capital improvement policy revisions. And that is Counselor Purdy.
In December, the finance department completed an ambitious review of all existing policies. This this revised capital improvement policy reflects minor revisions made necessary by the changes to chapter fifteen of the city code and the new grants policy. Uh, be it ordered, the city council approves through revision to the city of Saco's capital improvement policy. I I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Keeping up the trend, Counselor Johnston?
Told you, I'm all consistency.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition, a roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Moving on to item ten, which is new business, uh, and that is item A, technical design standards construction manual.
Mr. Mayor, we should be promoting uh City Engineer Joel Verrier for this item.
Thank you. City Engineer Leverrier, thank you for joining us. Greetings and welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
So the item before us is the adoption of technical design standards for the construction manual. Uh, what would you like to tell the council about this as far as the presentation?
Um, this is actually something we talked about with the planning board probably about two years ago, and it was before the the last year's effort to redo zoning subdivision, site plan ordinances and uh the thought again, you know, two years ago, which is where we, you know, moved along today is to try to pull a lot of the construction standards that were buried in various different sections of the ordinance. Um, some relatively easy to find, some not so relatively easy to find, but try to get them all into one location where a developer or engineer that comes into the city to do a project is more readily available to find what our standards are. And um, over the years, some of the things that were in those subdivision regulations in particular had just become a little bit outdated. Um, you know, one example is uh curb type materials. I think, you know, some of you will notice that the city over the years has used a lot now of slip form concrete curb and uh that wasn't even in our uh ordinances at the the ones that are in a place technically today. And it's just a function of, you know, times have changed, some of how we do things have changed and and we uh didn't really have a lot of that in our standards as they were written down. So essentially, as developers came in, we would be trying to go through some of the things that are different, how we do things today. And so that was what the goal was, was to try to get them all updated and get them in one uh easy to find location. So that's really what it what it was all about. Uh, and then when they went through the process of obviously the pretty extensive rewrite of ordinances, site plan subdivision, um, we just tried to push that along to get it done. So now it just references this manual um as a place to go find that information. That's all I have for you. Happy to answer.
Thank you very much for that. Counsel, any questions for City Engineer Leverrier? Counsel Archer?
So what I'm hearing is pretty much a Cliff's Notes for our developers.
Uh, yeah, I mean, again, we it it covers it right now. There's the the again, I think we have plans eventually to continue to expand this. For instance, uh, pump stations is down at the water resource recovery. There'll be a chapter eventually added to this is where we would like to go at some point, but that would be a future amendment. We did not have that chapter uh done at this point in time. Uh, so we've we've covered basically what has was always in uh the subdivision regs with respect to roads, sidewalks, uh sewers, storm drains. Um, and we added the chapter about uh water quality, you know, stormwater management provision. So but yes, it is basically a Cliff's Note for the developers.
And the second part is I I I like what I see, so that makes it nice and easy. Um, but it it can there be some kind of statement stating that this does not uh you still have to go to the law, the ordinance? Some kind of saying that this is a, this is here for your reference, but uh in the end, it's the city ordinance that needs to matter, just in case we update something and the manual doesn't get updated um in time. There's always that that happens. Um, I love what I see. Uh, but I also want to protect the city just saying, hey, city rules, ordinances will always apply over the manual.
Yep, that's fine. I can work with Bob about what we might do. We could probably add something in that preamble section to that effect if you if you'd like. Um, I think what you'll find is that if you're in the site plan subdivision uh regs, it 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 does the kind of the the complimentary to which you're saying is it refers them to this manual uh to find that information. So we certainly can do the same thing and reverse back. So.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Any further questions for City Engineer Leverrier? Counselor Johnston?
No, no questions. Just um, you know, great job. I know this was a an arduous task and it's definitely more clear and concise than the way it was all laid out everywhere before. So great job to both you and Emily. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? I'm not hearing any objections. So counsel, you'll see this on a upcoming agenda. Counselor Archer, you are noted as the council liaison. Are you willing to be the liaison for this?
Yeah, not a problem. Definitely.
Thank you. City Engineer Leverrier, thank you very much for joining us this evening uh and and providing us that presentation and for all your hard work.
You're more than welcome. Thank you.
Uh, with that, we are at item B of new business. That is TIF and CIA guidelines. And I believe we will be getting a update and a presentation from Economic Development Director Clavett and Economic Development Specialist Jessa Burner. And they've both been promoted. Greetings and welcome. Thank you for joining us. And we're we're ready to learn. And we're ready to learn all about TIFFs and CEA guidelines and changes.
Great. And I will turn this over to Jessa, who's been working on this project extensively. And this has also been through our Economic Development Advisory Board as well.
I have a very brief presentation. If you don't mind, I just want to share my screen. Can you see that?
We can see your screen.
Okay, thank you. And if I look to the side, it's because I'm looking at my other monitor. So just to give you a little background on these TIFF and CEA guidelines, at the request of council and the EDC, staff's been updating these guidelines. The current policy, which is titled Development Districts and Tax Increment Financing, were adopted by the council in 97 and revised in 2016. I know that perennially, as we go through adopting a CE, a CE in particular, it comes up sometimes that maybe these guidelines need updated. So it's something that's been on our radar for a while, and now it's a good time to act on it. These draft guidelines were reviewed by our TIFF attorney, Shauna Cook Mueller, and on Monday, February 22, the EDC did unanimously vote to recommend the adoptions of these guidelines in this form presented tonight. So some of the goals of these changes, as I mentioned, it's come up periodically, that they do need to be updated. The purpose is to provide more clarity, transparency, and equity in the process of establishing new TIFF districts and issuing credit enhancement agreements. This policy also provides a clear process for issuing TIFFs and CEAs and outlines the eligibility, general priorities for the city to consider in the approval. Some of the key details in this policy, we have, it's addressing two things that are pretty different from each other. One is the establishing of a TIFF district, which is much more general, and I, you know, we've been over this a number of times in terms of the importance of having the TIFF districts as sort of a tax sheltering tool and just providing funds for some different types of projects. So one is about establishing that, and then a credit enhancement agreement is more into, for a specific project in terms of getting money back to support that project. So these guidelines worked hard to sort of pull those apart and make sure that we're addressing the goals for each of those separately. So some of the guiding principles that we provided are to, and I'm kind of improvising, is to support city plans and policies, stimulate the tax base, create and retain quality employment opportunities, encourage housing, and invest in infrastructure improvements. This policy also provides a clear process for enacting the TIFF. It also has a $1,000 fee, which is something that's new. That's something that if a developer, say, comes in to do a TIFF and a CEA together, then they would have to first apply for the TIFF. If the city is creating a TIFF like we recently did with a transit oriented TIFF, that would not apply. And then there'd be a separate fee for the CEA after the TIFF is formed. And then this policy also outlines three, the three TIFF expenditures, one being municipal economic development programs funded directly through annual fund requests for appropriations, the second is projects financed by city bond or debt issuance, and the third is CEAs, which we'll go into more in just a moment. So in issuing a CEA, we kind of have struggled in the past because there's some requirements that are very prescriptive, some that are very broad. Is it a policy? Is it more guidelines? And so we tried to hit the balance of giving clear enough guidelines to make a decision without really strapping us, and if something comes up before us, that is, that we really do want to support, but that maybe we hadn't foreseen. So some of the general priorities that we've outlined in this draft include creating new jobs, assisting existing businesses to retain jobs, create significant long-term employment, create or expand public infrastructure beyond projects, support emerging business sectors, introduce a new, a unique or prestigious opportunity. Now, that's something new that we added as we've seen some of these examples come up before, where maybe it's not the biggest company, but it is something that's really interesting and unique that we want to really support in Saco. So we added that from the current ones. Improve the local economy, broaden the tax base, improve blighted areas, support community projects, and create a public benefit for workers and businesses. Again, the CEA, like with the TIFF project, provides a clear process for how you have to establish the district. There are some very basic eligibility requirements, but then on top of that, there's more detailed guidelines to help the city determine, okay, we want to support the CEA. They need the eligibility requirements, but how much do we fund this CEA? Because there's a lot of discretion in that actual level of funding. So this provides a framework to help the council make that decision. And then there's also a section on transfer of ownership, because if you change businesses and hands, that doesn't need to be addressed legally. So that's just kind of a quick overview of what's in the policy. We're looking for any feedback tonight. Again, we're trying to make this policy a little clearer, more transparent, and also give the appropriate amount of guidance to the council as we move forward with these decisions.
Thank you, Jessa. One thing, during your discussion, I seem to remember, and I'm just looking back at the meeting minutes and the agenda from our April 3, 2017 council meeting, where we did update the Development District and Tax Increment Financing Guidelines in 2017 during an April meeting. Did, when you were doing your, when you were gathering the information for your presentation, are we working off of those amended guidelines? Or, because I know there was some confusion on guidelines with the changing of economic development directors. So I just want to make sure we're using the most recent documents when we're preparing to move something forward, so. Just a question, I don't, you don't have to be on the spot right at the moment. I don't want to do that.
I'm not 100%. Sorry. I'm not 100% positive. I will check on that, and before we bring it back to make a motion to adopt, make sure that we're adopting from the most recent, for sure.
Thank you very much. And like I said, that was April 3, 2017. Counselor Menthorn made the motion. I seconded, and the motion was approved after some amendments.
Right.
It was a passed with seven yeas.
One of the things, Mayor, if I could add to this, is this represents a consolidation and a compilation of existing past policies and some other guideline documents that were created throughout the state in various communities. And this, what you're going to be looking at, I know that we mingle the conversation between policy and guideline. These are a set of guidelines as opposed to policy. And the importance to understand the difference between the two is that it leaves a little bit more flexibility in making decisions rather than somebody criteria A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Basically, as long as they meet the majority, enough of a matrix, because we'll be designing a matrix type of evaluative tool to be able to have these evaluated. So you just can't come in and say, we want a TIFF, we want a credit enhancement agreement. They will have to use guidelines. So that's the primary difference between the two. The other one is, is the original set of documents that were created were very financially driven and written by, you know, to be evaluated financially, and that component of guidelines and policies that were created in the years past will be passed on to southern finance agencies so we can maintain business confidentiality, and they have the qualifications to actually ascertain whether they move forward as a solvent business. Those financial documents are not part of the public record. Sign off for if they are actually financially sound and able to move forward as a business.
Thank you, Director Clavett. Any other questions for Director Clavett or Economic Development Specialist Burner? Okay. So Counsel, you'll see this on a agenda, an upcoming agenda, if there's no objection. Fair enough. Moving on to Director Clavett, Specialist Burner, thank you very much for joining us this evening and all for all your hard work on the presentation to wrap in all of our guidelines into one document. So thank you very much. Have a great evening. That brings us to item 11 on the agenda, which is the administrative updates. City Administrator Canrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to hit again on the Ward 5 council appointment, the city is currently accepting letters of interest from residents of Ward 5 who wish to be considered for the Ward 5 appointment. They will be set until March 24 in our city clerk's office. Just to be clear on the process, which was already told, but it will be the exact same process as we just had for the Ward 4 vacancy. So all applicants, all candidates will be considered by the council in public session for a presentation before the council, before an actual appointment is made. So again, that was March 24 at the close of business, 5:00 PM with the city clerk's office to file. Just to update again on the Army Corps of Engineers project, as you know, we're currently waiting to hear back from the Army Corps on our letter of support. We have not yet, but in the meantime, we are going to go ahead and draft another letter just in case. We need to file another letter of support with them, and that will be for council consideration. We're just going to have the letter ready if you so choose to consider it. Just so we're prepared to move that process forward as quickly as possible if we need to and not waste any more time. Senior Meals Program with Parks and Rec, we had an event last week on March 4 that did 250 meals again, which was incredible. So thank you to Parks and Rec and all the volunteers there for making that happen. Our next date will be in early April to coincide with the Easter holidays. So more details to come on that. I assume by next week I'll have the exact date and time for that next Meals Program event. Just another quick note, I recently met with Dan Shadowborn, our harbor master, to discuss some needed repairs down at the Camp Bellis Pier. We're going to be doing some work on the boat ramp, the hoist, and some other minor repairs in the area to get things ready for the summer season. And just to be on notice, we may be looking at some more extensive repairs or replacement of the boat ramp in a future year coming up. But it was good to see Dan and hopefully work through some of those issues and get everything ready for the spring and summer, which is just around the corner. So that's all I have. Thank you. Have any questions?
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions for the city administrator? Okay, moving on to item 12 of the agenda, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment? Moving on, is there a motion? What should be item 13 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Counselor McPhail?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, Personnel Matters.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy? Any discussion? A roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to enter executive session at 8:54 PM. Folks, please migrate over to the Zoom link you were provided by City Administrator Canrath. We will take a five-minute recess in between, five-minute recess in between. So please migrate over there, but feel free to take five minutes for yourself. So please migrate over there, but feel free to take five minutes for yourself.
Okay, welcome back everyone. We're at item 14 on the agenda, report from executive session. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? Councilor Johnston, is there a second to come out of executive session?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. On coming out of executive session, any discussion? A roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session passes 6:00 at 9:54 p.m. Any report from executive session?
No report.
Council Archer says no report from executive session. At this time, we are moving on to item 15 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Council, I do want to say that I missed back early on. There was a first meeting of the Mayor's Arts Commission. It was held on Thursday of last week, and I will give everybody an update at the next council meeting on that. So please forgive me there. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Discussion on adjournment? A roll call vote on adjournment. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6:00 to adjourn at 9:55 p.m. Thank you very much everyone. Have a great evening. Be well and stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.